All right. In the absence of our council president, I will go ahead and call this committee of the whole meeting of the Middleton Common Council to order. Brian, if you would do vocal?
Yes.
Alder Shaver?
Here.
Alder Wokas?
Here.
Mayor Kuhn?
Here.
Alder Jackson?
Here.
Alder Heniro?
Here.
Alder Lorman?
Here.
Alder Crowe?
Here.
And Alderman Katie Nelson is on her way. She will be here momentarily. The first item on the agenda is discussion items for the Committee of the Whole Direction. And I believe that is the item. I'm going to look at how it's worded on the council agenda. And it is the deliberation on and selection of candidate for District Four Elder Person vacancy. I believe.
Yes, so the purpose of just this meeting, this 45-minute period, is to allow the council the opportunity to conduct the three interviews of the candidates that we've received. We've got them listed in times for the interview slots, 6:45, 7:00 PM, and 7:15. So you have about 15 minutes for each interview if you so need it. And I asked last week for you to give me a list of potential questions to ask each of the candidates, the same questions for all three candidates, and that list of questions is in front of your individual desks.
And if Alderman Nelson, if you're ready, I will be Chair of the meeting to you.
Thank you.
Or I can...
Thank you.
Yeah, you've had enough time to adjust.
So I would invite candidate Thomas Yost to come up inside the seat at this table. We'll have the council start with the interview.
Am I waiting for you or are you waiting for me?
You're waiting for me. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Sure.
It will be very nice to meet you. First of all, can you just tell us your name again?
Thomas Yost.
Okay, great.
I go by Tom.
Go by Tom, okay. Tom, I'm going to ask you these questions that we put together as council. First of all, what inspired you to run for District Four Elder Person?
So I've lived in my district for 30 years in the same location. And most of that time, it was Jim Wexler. And he did a really good job. He had lots of meetings at the Park, Lakeview Park and all that. But it was starting to irritate me that so many, including Jim's, positions were coming up with no opposition. So, I mean, it was almost like, why vote if all of the positions in Middleton, whether it be mayor and alder and some of the other positions, a lot of those frequently had no opposition. It was like there was no discussion. And so the first time I ran, I've run twice recently in the last six years, and the first time I ran was just for the reason of having opposition. And as soon as I decided to run, somebody else decided to come in as the third candidate. And you know who that is. And that's Emily. And so I dropped out to make it a two-way election. And then the incumbent Elizabeth Hetrick, who I thought had done an outstanding job, even though I was running against her. And so she dropped out, I guess she was expecting. And so I'm not even sure if I was on the ballot or not. I think I was. I think I missed the nomination process that time around. But that's the first time I ran, that's the reason I ran. But I've been active. I've been on several consults, or several of the committees. I was appointed to the telecommunications committee by Dan Ramsey back in the late 90s, briefly. And then I, more recently, under Gerdup, I was on the library trust. And I was also on the police safety, public safety, rather, sorry, committee. And I've enjoyed being on those committees. I had concerns that I wanted to address, which I was at least able to explain how I think things could be improved. So most of it has, for the same reasons that I wanted to be in these committees, is the same reason that I've been running, or that I ran recently. I guess I'm the only...
For opposition, is it?
Well, it's opposition was the initial. But there were also, you know, other concerns. I think more recently, my concern is watching the newer development that I thought needed to be more carefully reviewed and scrutinized. So like comparing the development that was going on in the 90s, I thought the... So my last time I ran, my concerns were, you know, this state changes in zoning and where we're changing in the infill development, I had concerns with that. And that was one of my key issues the last time I ran.
Great.
Okay.
That sounds good. My second question. In 2016, the city's residents voted overwhelmingly, 81%, in favor of Middleton taking more action to combat climate change. In 2018, the council passed a resolution that set the goal of achieving 100% renewable energy for community-wide energy needs by the year 2050. What are some of the actions you would propose, taking to combat climate change and to move Middleton closer to the 100% renewable energy goal?
You know, I only have the typical awareness of that. I'm not well-versed in what direction our city needs to take. However, I did notice in the materials for the next meeting that you guys are looking at quitting, you know, working on getting rechargers or charging stations for electrical vehicles. And I would think that would be a good first step to, you know, to help facilitate people being able to have electrical vehicles. And then the solar panel, you know, Middleton has been real active about putting solar panels on top of the, you're building out there by Nun's Flooring. So I support those initiatives. But I don't, I'm not well-versed enough to tell you where you should be going.
That's fine, that's fine. What are your main issues or objectives that you prioritize during your time as alder?
You know, one of the things I liked about Gerdup is that when there was opposition to something that was before the council, that he would slow the process down to give both sides a chance to iron out and then come to a compromise. So, you know, to be involved in that, I mean, that's what we really need in politics today is to keep bringing two sides together and teaching people how to compromise. And that my goal would be to be supportive of those kind of compromises when there's two sides to an issue.
Are there any other issues that you would make your main issues?
You know, I... I would support any issue, well, anything to improve life for the common guy here, the common person in Middleton. And that would include being supportive of, you know, the workforce development help or other low-income type help. I would be supportive of that. I came from the working side of Madison, the northeast side, and I went to a high school that was, I think, more diverse than at least this room is. I don't know what it's like at school here. But I did have some people in my neighborhood tell me that they moved to Middleton because of the schools and that I felt like they were not my school, northeast side, Madison East High School. And I know things are a lot different today and there's more tension because I don't, you know, I'm reading about these fights and things in the paper in Madison. And so maybe, I know that when I went to East, it was a good school and we didn't have any problems that I was aware of between the classes. It was a very, you know, we had like a lot of the Oscar Meyer vice presidents going to the same school that a lot of kids that had families on welfare. And I think that was a really good experience for me to be able to, you know, as opposed to being isolated with just people in your own socioeconomic group. I don't know, I'm rambling, so.
All right. What are your thoughts about building high-density housing greater than five stories in areas of the city that have typically redeveloped below this level?
First of all, I think, there was when Erdman did Middleton Hills, he brought in a nationally well-known, regarded city planner. And his big key about both Middleton and Madison, I was at the unveiling of Middleton Hills, that was the new Granger Hall building on the university campus, it was televised. And he made the comment that we're not respecting the original plan. And so I think, you know, having locations, I noticed on East Washington Avenue, it seems like all the high buildings are going up in the center, halfway in the middle of the isthmus. So they're not blocking somebody else's view or sunshine or whatever. I think having really well-thought-out planning, instead of doing it in a haphazard, I know that I'm sounding a little bit, uh, being, I'm not sure what the word I want to use, but... Something that's well-thought-out, and when you're doing, when the developer is asking if you will rezone a particular lot in the middle of a particular development, I think there should be some really good reasons to make that kind of an exception. And I think we need to support our older communities too. There is definitely a place for high-rise buildings in Middleton, especially outside the Belt Line, and maybe in between somewhere, but somewhere where it's welcome. Because in Middleton Hills, people like it that there's a grocery store nearby. They like, you know, it's all balanced. The housing and the retail and everything works together there because it's, because he saw, Erdman saw the big picture. So that's what I think good planning is about. And I think that we should be a little bit more careful about our use of... Well, we used to have a rule about infill. I think when Stagecoach went down, we needed a supermajority to do that. And I guess I would support having a supermajority when we're rezoning a lot in the middle of a block.
All right. How will your work and life experiences help you with your role as alder person?
I, you know, I... I've been in service work. I've worked for the American Red Cross. I've worked with people. I engage people in conversations. And I, and this is a volunteer job, and when I left the Red Cross, I continued to be doing things like delivering blood to hospitals and things like that as a volunteer. So the volunteer service aspect of this is similar to what I did both as a paid employee and a volunteer at the Red Cross, and also as a security officer.
What is District Four's most pressing issue now, and what will it be in two years?
I, well, I'm, it seems like the, you know, I have a feeling that with interest rates going up, development's going to slow down. But, you know, the next big development that I'm aware of is across the street from us, shores. And I think in a way that's less, you know, it's a bigger lot, it's, it has less neighbors. I think that, you know, that if we could get the, if we could make some accommodations to the Marina Drive people so that they don't have a wall or a canyon, you know, if you kept the tall building closer to the intersection of Allen and Sentry and where it's more commercial, I think that could work. But I think it needs to be a process that tries to accommodate both sides. And so I think, again, we're talking about people being upset with development and developers being upset because they can't develop. So those are the two sides that I understand the most and that I heard the most when I campaigned last year, you know? And when I talked to people, they were unhappy with infill buildings being too close to the road and/or taking away their sunshine from their backyard.
And finally, what is an issue facing Middleton that's not currently under discussion? For example, not public safety, sustainability, or affordable housing. What's an issue that may be overlooked now but will be a significant issue for our future?
I think distributed library services, like Gerdup was trying to get. I know Madison, I worked for eight years on weekends with the South Central Library System, so I used to support, on weekends, I would support people who had problems logging into the LinkCAT database. And Madison is open on Sundays, and I don't want to see anybody working on Sunday that doesn't want to for religious reasons. I think we need to accommodate that. But some people have their day off on Saturday and some have it on Sunday. And I'm sure there's people that, you know, that you could open the library to make the library more accessible to people who work a lot and don't have a lot of time to go to the library. So improving library services and that with both hours and also by going out into big apartments or nursing homes. For example, Madison has, there are branches of Madison at the Old Attic Angels on Segal Road. That's independent living for, I think that's low-income retirement. And then Attic Angels, which is high-income retire, and they all have Madison branches within their building. And I would think that we could do something like that also. And that would be something that would tie into my past work.
Very good. Thank you so much. Those are my questions for you.
Sure.
All right, we're going to move on.
You're going to move on, okay. I don't have time to finish that with.
No, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Jennifer Cole is next.
Can I leave by door hangers or from? This was from my previous campaign. I didn't, yeah, direct mail link.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I have one too? Thank you, Tom.
Test one, two.
I did. I don't know where you came from.
Next is Jennifer Cole. Thank you so much for coming, Jennifer.
Thank you, Chair Nelson.
I'm going to go right through the same questions. What inspired you to run for District Four Elder Person?
First, Mayor Kuhn, City Council members, thank you so much for having me here this evening. As Chair Nelson mentioned, my name is Jennifer Cole. My pronouns are she and her. What inspired me to run this time for District Four is not, there's a huge glaring policy issue that I feel very strongly about in Middleton, but more so out of a desire to be part of Middleton's future and making sure that our community excels, continues to excel. I chose to live in Middleton. I chose Middleton specifically six years ago because of its great neighborhoods, because, like mine in Lakeview, because of the amenities here and because of the commitment to conservation, maintaining green space, and proximity and accessibility, like the easy bus ride I have to work downtown in Madison. And it's just really the forward-looking mindset and innovation and excellence that I really appreciate about Middleton and want to be part of that solution.
In 2016, the city's residents voted overwhelmingly, 81%, in favor of Middleton taking more action to combat climate change. In 2018, the council passed a resolution that set the goal of achieving 100% renewable energy for community-wide energy needs by the year 2050. What are some of the actions you would propose, taking to combat climate change and to move Middleton closer to the 100% renewable energy goal?
So, prior to the pandemic, when I was looking to get involved with the city, I applied and met with a former mayor, Brar, and was appointed to the Community Campus Committee. And in that work together, I think some of the ideas about the possible plans that we explored were really things that I would like to see continue to be part of planning discussions, including, you know, making sure there's efficiencies in electrical and HVAC of any developments that are coming, and particularly if it's city developments, we looked at things for green roofs. I think maintaining our green space is an excellent way, looking at alternatives to transportation, right, making Middleton increasingly more and more bike-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, all of those things that are going to reduce emissions in our city. However, knowing that climate change is upon us and the effects are here, we also need to be looking at mitigation efforts. I know that much of Middleton was affected by the flooding in 2018. I personally and my condominium association was greatly impacted by the city's storm drains not being able to take on all of the water. And our flooding issues were just really exacerbated by the backup. And so how do we mitigate the impacts of increased flooding, increased water, increased high winds? So it's kind of coupled with us taking that sustainable approach and being a leader, but also making sure we're mitigating the impacts because we know it's here, so.
What are your main issues or objectives that you prioritize during your term as alder?
So one thing that I've done a lot over my career is a lot of consensus building and really hearing from folks about things. I've done a lot of participatory action research and things that engage and involve communities. So for me, it would really be just continuing the great work in District Four of making sure that we are reaching out to those citizens across all sort of backgrounds and identities. That's one thing that is really unique about District Four, I feel like, for Middleton, is it really has a great diversity, especially with socioeconomic levels, going from Section Eight housing to one, a couple blocks away, to, you know, waterfront, very lovely homes. And so really just trying to be a conduit for those residents. Another thing, and I think may answer some of your next questions, but as a queer person, for me, the anti-LGBTQ sentiments message and policymaking that's happening across the country and in communities in Wisconsin is very scary, very hurtful. And so I really want to apply my experience as a member of a marginalized community and use my positions of privilege that I have to make sure that our city is safe and equitable, inclusive and accessible. And really, like, that's another reason why I chose Middleton, is it's the good neighbor city. And I think being part of being neighborly is that equity and inclusion and making sure that we are protecting all members and, you know, speaking out against the anti-African chief hate. So that's a big, big thing for me. And like I said, mitigating the impacts of climate change, more so than, you know, even in addition to sustainability and additional. And also, I think, as a condo owner, I'm uniquely positioned to represent District Four in that I'm a property owner, but I'm also living in and amongst a multifamily, multi-resident housing unit and understand sort of all of the needs that we have with regard to being property owners as well as the good neighbors in close quarters.
What are your thoughts about building high-density housing greater than five stories in areas of the city that have typically redeveloped below this level?
I think it's, I think it is a case-by-case basis because I think there is a real need to address housing. We have a housing crisis. We have a housing shortage. We have issues with affordable housing in this country. Middleton is, like, very primally positioned in the greater Madison area in South Central Wisconsin to be a place where people want to live, can live. And I think it's about hearing from our planners, about hearing from residents, it's about hearing from the developers, to find where we can make sure that we are making housing that is affordable, making, and that may include things that are higher than what has been traditionally planned. I think it is a planning best practice to, and it's also part of sustainability, to look for new and innovative ways to have multifamily, multi-resident housing and intermixed in single-family home neighborhoods. We know that when you have a sort of that inner combination of housing types, communities do better, that they thrive more. So it's really about where is that development going, what is the impact of that particular city street or wherever? And so I think really it is a case-by-case basis.
How will your work and life experiences help you with your role as alder person?
Certainly. I have a very deep commitment to public service. I think, as you can see from my submission, I'm sort of a public policy nerd. And for me, working by and large at a state level for at least 15 years now, for me to work more at the micro or local level, I've been working at the micro-local level for the last five years. I've been serving on my condo association board of directors and for the past two and a half years have been serving as, elected as president. And so I have firsthand experience working with over 80 residents of District Four, listening to them and their concerns and needs, and being able to find pragmatic and forward-looking solutions. And so I really brought my commitment to governance, stewardship, and consensus building to improving our association. We have really had to combat some really past ills of mismanagement and poor leadership and negligence. And we have really turned things around and are on a path to really improving our property. I will really apply these approaches to my work for District Four. So not beyond just Jamestown and beyond just the Lakeview Park where I walk my dogs every day, but the entire district.
We're going to try and be succinct for these last two questions so that I can fit in enough time for our next candidate. What's District Four's most pressing issue now and what will it be in two years?
As I've already mentioned, I think the impacts of climate change, some of our low-line areas, the lakefront areas, water and wind. Our Jamestown condo association, we were impacted by last year's really bizarre and straight-line winds, so we had a lot of property damage. really bizarre and straight-line winds. So we had a lot of property damage and trees down. We all know that this increases costs to all of us, city and property owners and insurance companies. So again, it's that mitigation of climate. And I think, and as I mentioned, I think the rise in anti-LGBTQ hate and just really hurtful sentiments and policymaking, I think it's not far off. There's, you know, Middleton is not immune, and so I think that will be an issue too.
Lastly, what's an issue facing Middleton that's not currently under discussion? For example, not public safety or sustainability or affordable housing. What's an issue that may be overlooked now, but will be a significant issue for our future?
That's where I think Middleton does such a good job of being forward-looking and innovative and trying to find the solutions to maybe problems that aren't right in front of us, but problems that we know are gonna happen. So for me, that's a challenging question to leave out all of the things we've already discussed. But again, like I said, I think the anti-LGBTQ hate is on its way and also just making sure that we don't lose momentum in equity and inclusion and putting that to our policymaking lens across Middleton.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Todd Kalish. Todd, am I saying your last name correctly? Kalish, I apologize. What inspired you to run for District Four Alder Person?
Yeah, thanks. And before I get started, thank you, Mayor Coon, Chair Nelson, and the rest of the council members for giving me this opportunity. Really, really appreciate it. So what inspired me? Number one, my life motto is to always leave a place that you've been better than you found it, whether it's a small way or a large way. And my fiancee and I are one-hundred percent committed to Middleton. We rented here for a while. We just built a house here. We love it. We absolutely love this community, and I feel that I've got some experiences, some connections, some opportunities to help, you know, make this council potentially be more efficient, more effective, more productive, have additional resources to bring to this council. I think that this is a really unique opportunity, you know, because this, you know, this person, whoever serves in this role, wasn't elected by the voters of District Four. And I think that's one of the things that I would bring, because I think that, you know, the content of this person's character is absolutely critical. The views, the opinions that this person has is important. But I think what's even more important is that this person will truly be a vessel for District Four residences, you know, since we didn't go through the normal process. And that's what I feel that I excel at. If you've looked at my resume, I've worked for the Department of Natural Resources in three different states, and we excel in working with diverse partners. There's just over 1.3 million folks that buy fishing licenses every year, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of businesses that we've worked with, numerous local units of government, state government, federal government. And I think that, you know, if I were honored enough to have this position, I'd bring a little different perspective. And my viewpoint is important, but not as important as engaging with staff, council members, the community in general, to hear and understand and fully engage with them about what their issues are so that we could move forward in a really productive way.
In 2016, the city's residents voted overwhelmingly in favor of Middleton taking more action to combat climate change. In 2018, the council passed a resolution that set the goal of achieving one-hundred percent renewable energy for community-wide energy needs by the year 2050. What are some actions that you would propose taking to combat climate change and to move Middleton closer to that one-hundred percent renewable energy goal?
This is right up my alley. We at the DNR were pursuing a variety of initiatives to address this issue. You know, one of the things that I would do and what we're doing at DNR is actively engaging the community. The community, the businesses, they need to understand and really believe the importance of this particular issue. They need to make it as their own. So more efficiently, more effectively engaging with the community and providing them opportunities to better understand, you know, why it's important to address this particular issue and how it can be beneficial to them as well, whether it's a personal benefit or otherwise. I also think that planning is absolutely critical, and that's one of the things that you're gonna hear me mention over and over again. So if we're going to meet that goal, I think that the plan that we have in place is really good, but we also need to, we need to identify benchmarks. So how, you know, as we move along, we have to have a succinct plan for when we hit this benchmark, this benchmark, this benchmark. A hundred percent is absolutely great, perfect. That's what we want, the end goal. But we need to show successes along the way. The other thing that I would do is actively engage all of the other entities throughout the state and throughout the country that are pursuing the savings act initiative. There are literally millions of dollars out there available right now for pursuing this type of goal. And I think that if I were honored enough to have this position, one of the things that I would potentially bring is some additional resources that we could bring to this community to help us meet our goal of one-hundred percent fully renewable in the future.
What are your main issues or objectives that you prioritize during your term as Alder?
You know, one of the things I, and as I said before, one of the very first things that I would do is engage with council members, engage with District Four staff to understand, better understand what their thoughts and what their opinions are and what their major issues are as well. Because I think being a vessel is absolutely critical, important. One of the issues that I think is really important is sustainable development. You know, we need to plan. Middleton's growing, has been growing for a long time. And there's a variety of components, sustainable development, you've probably heard that term thrown around. But when I say sustainable development, I mean looking at specific things like the environment. So we need to, we need to really preserve and build off the things that, what, the things that make Middleton so strong, pheasant branch, that the natural communities, make sure that development doesn't overrun some of these environmental things that sustain all of us. Equitable distribution of development in communities. I think it's really critical for a community to be a haven for people of, you know, of diversity and of all different income levels, you know, folks that don't make much money, folks that make in the middle, folks that make a lot, you know, they need to have a variety of opportunities to make Middleton home because it's such a great place. And also in terms of sustainable development, make sure that we maintain the things that are really critical to Middleton's culture and what has made it so successful in the past. So things like art and culture and the vibrant downtown that we've got, you know, we don't want to lose our core. And so those are, you know, just some of the things that I really highlight. And then also safety, you know, public safety. As Middleton grows, as we grow, get more people, we have to make sure that we focus on keeping all of our citizens safe.
What are your thoughts about building high-density housing greater than five stories in areas of the city that are typically redeveloped below this level?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna be one-hundred percent honest with you. I'm not familiar with this issue. And so I can't comment on this particular issue, but in general, what I would say is that it's very important and very critical to follow the current plans that we have in place. I know that the city is currently pursuing a zoning update, in a zoning review. And, you know, if that development is consistent with what the community and this council and the citizens of Middleton has said is appropriate and okay, then we should move forward. If it isn't, then we shouldn't.
Can you speak up a little louder? There's some chatter.
Okay.
Can you close that door?
You cannot. Maybe the door has to open.
There's a lot of noise.
It's okay, they're excited. Sorry, didn't do that.
Todd, how will your work and life experiences help you with your role as Alder Person?
Yeah, so I've, you looked at my resume. I have a really diverse experience. I've worked in four different states. I'm originally from Wisconsin. I worked really hard to get back here. I love this state. But in the last twelve or so years, I have had senior state administrative level positions at the DNRs in Michigan, Minnesota, and Wisconsin. So all three of those states have entrusted me with the statewide regional management of their fisheries program. With that experience comes experience in working, administering staff. So my, you know, my, we currently have about two hundred full-time people within Fisheries Bureau. I also am responsible for developing, implementing, and managing strategic plans, statewide strategic plans, rules, regulations, policies to assure that the fisheries manages public trust resources appropriately for current and future generations.
What is District Four's most pressing issue now, and what will it be in two years?
Might not be a surprise, climate change. Environmental issues, I think, are absolutely critical. And the reason I say that is because climate change and renewable resources will impact everybody. Every single person in the city and every person in the entire world. And so I think that, you know, climate change and addressing that and working towards a very succinct plan with succinct benchmarks and then engaging the community on how important this is. We've all seen it, you know, the spring has been very weird, and that's a reflection of climate change. So I think that's one of the most pressing issues.
And lastly, what's an issue facing Middleton that's not currently under discussion? Like public safety or sustainability or affordable housing. What's an issue that may be overlooked now, but will be a significant issue for our future?
Yeah, and I think that one of the experiences that I would bring is, what gets to this question, is I've served on both sides. So I've served on a variety of boards, commissions, multinational commissions. I was the Council Great Lakes Fisheries Agency's Chair, which involves Canada and the US and multiple states. And right now, I'm also one of the Fisheries Bureau's primary representatives to present to our Natural Resources Board, which oversees all our rules, regulations, and policies. So I've got experience being on both sides. And I think one of the things in my experience with boards and commissions and, you know, agencies or committees that are responsible for planning into the future and engaging diverse input is we're always planning for what is currently occurring, but not what might occur. So we're always planning for increased growth, and that's what we're doing right now in sustainable development. We also need to plan for the other way. We also need to plan for the roller coasters. And so that's what I would, that's what I would really recommend is, if we're going to have a succinct plan that is really most beneficial for all the citizens in Middleton, we need to assume that the trajectory won't always go the same direction. So we need to plan for all of those, there's those ups and downs.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I want to apologize to my council members for being tardy. And thank you, Kendra, for hanging in there for me. And sorry to find you.
We're all human.
We're all working people too. I would like to move that we, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn this committee of the whole.
Make that motion. This is an IRO.
I second that motion. This is Jackson.
On the favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.